Good evening, everyone. Mayor Michael Foley here. At Westbrook City Hall, we are joining you this evening for a regular meeting of the Westbrook City Council. We apologize for the delay as we were just finishing an executive session from our special meeting of the Westbrook City Council. In just a moment, I will turn it over to Council President Riordan to adjourn that meeting and then call to order our new meeting. We apologize for all the switching as we navigate the technical way for us to have an appropriate executive session here for the Westbrook City Council. With that, we have the same procedures that we always have had, and once we adjourn the meeting, Council Council President Gary Riordan will call to order the new one, and then we will introduce our new meeting. Council President Riordan.
What of executive session?
I think you were muted, Gary. Oops, try it again.
Good evening. I would like to get a have a motion to come out of the executive session. Okay, moved by Vice President Turcot, seconded by Vice Councilor Shaughnessy that we are adjourned from our executive session. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counselor Reganjay?
Yes.
Counselor Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Counselor Morse?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Vice President Turcot?
Yes.
Counselor Story?
Yes.
President Meriden?
Yes, seven in affirmative. We are adjourned and we will be taking up our regular city council meeting right after we're adjourned. We're adjourned. Alright, so we'll go back to the what regular is for a video conference and Madam Clerk, please do the roll call.
Counselor Reganjay?
Yes.
Counselor Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Counselor Morse?
Here.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Vice President Turcot?
Here.
Counselor Story?
Here.
President Meriden?
Yes, seven being present, we have a quorum. The in our packets, we have minutes for April 6, 2020, for the regular city council meeting. If there's no objections, those will be on record as they stand. Any objections? Seeing none? Those would be good. Mr. Mayor, Mayor's message?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bear with me just a moment. For our producer Barry, can you mark me as a co-host so I can remove an attendee, please?
Yeah, we have an issue, I see. Yeah.
Mayor, check the Q and A.
Yeah, I know. I Q and A only, only only panelists can see the Q and A. So I'll remove that attendee from the meeting.
That's a good thing.
It looks like the person has has left. We apologize. We had someone submitting Q and A items that were inappropriate, which I will dismiss them all. But thankfully, none of that is shared with the public because of the precautions that we take using the webinar function. So thank you, Barry. I just want to quickly thank Barry for all his support and helping us produce these Zoom meetings and different things that we're doing here in the city. He is behind the logo. You won't see him, but thank you, Barry, for all the work that you are doing to help us with this technology. With that, I'll start with the mayor's message. I did send out the mayor's message to everyone this evening in advance of the meeting. But before we begin our recognition and other announcements, I'd like to offer moments of silence for two individuals connected to our community we recently lost. On April 27th, we lost public services employee Joshua Lucier. He was a resident of Lewiston and died tragically in a motor vehicle accident. He was a valued employee, and we have been working with his family to ensure they receive the appropriate benefits during this difficult time. Please keep his family and friends in your thoughts and prayers, and let's please offer a moment of silence for Joshua. Thank you. Also, this past Saturday, May 2nd, there was a tragic motor vehicle accident involving a motorcycle on Route 25 here in Westbrook. The driver of the motorcycle was William Chadwick of Gorm, who passed away at the scene. The incident is still being investigated. Though Bill wasn't from Westbrook, he was the pastor of Stroudwater Christian Church in Portland, and he served the community tremendously with the Rotary Club of Westbrook-Gorm. He was a good friend and will be missed. Please keep his family and friends in your thoughts and prayers, and let's please offer a moment of silence for Bill. Thank you, everyone. Also additionally, the state of emergency, the third state of emergency report was issued today, and this report is intended to provide city council and the general public with a synopsis of municipal actions taken during the state of emergency and consolidates the information for historical reference. This report is attached to this mayor's message for review, and we will continue to report on a regular basis as long as the state of emergency remains active. Also, as part of my most recent announcement, we outlined our tentative reopening schedule and will continue to adjust as necessary. The fiscal year 2021 budget, as also described in the state of emergency report, I'm working with the city with city department heads to prepare the fiscal year 2021 budget, which will include no tax rate increase. This budget will be presented to city council during a special city council meeting on May 18. The city council finance committee will conduct its standard review of the budget proposal through the end of the month as we will work with finance committee, as we will also work with Finance Committee Chair Chow to establish that review schedule. First reading of the legislation approving the budget will take place on June 1st with second and final reading of the budget scheduled for June 15. Also, a state primary and school budget validation referendum election will be held on July 14. As outlined in the attached state emergency report, the traditional Memorial Day parade and ceremonies have been canceled. Instead, the city will issue a virtual Memorial Day tribute on Facebook on May 25th at 10:00 a.m. Also, the Westbrook-Gorm Community Chamber of Commerce has announced that the 2020 Westbrook Together Days has been canceled. They hope to enhance future events they are they hold along with next year's event. I applaud that they are sensitive to the challenges faced by our local businesses, who are typically major sponsors of the event's activities and may not have the same resources available. They have always stepped up and generously sponsored Westbrook Together Days, and they are encouraging everyone to support them during this time of recovery. Also, since our last council meeting, we announced three additional winners of the Westbrook Takeout and Delivery Support effort. Evan Heavy won $100 gift certificate to Stockhouse Restaurant and Sports Pub. Jonathan Rockwell won $100 gift certificate to the Frog and Turtle. Jay Lackey won $100 gift certificate to Profeno's Pizzeria and Pub, and Randy Olson won $100 gift certificate to Dairy Queen. Also, just for everyone's knowledge, Jay Lackey is the grandfather of our student representative Lily, and he was also one of the citizens who contacted me early on and provided us an example of this program somewhere else in the United States, and we were able to implement that very quickly with our economic development staff. Our next drawing will take place Monday for another $100 gift card to be announced. And to enter the contest, visit the city website and upload photos of receipts from Westbrook restaurants totaling $100 or more. We hope this program will help to infuse money into our local economy and help our local businesses, and we thank those who have participated thus far. And we do have a number of proclamations to introduce into the record today. The on April 24th, we did Counselor, but sorry, Vice President Turcot and I issued a mayoral proclamation for Armenian Genocide Commemoration Day, and so that was done via Facebook Live, and Vice President Turcot joined me to provide us a little more detail on the significance and importance of that event. And that proclamation was included in today's packet for your review. Also, the mayoral proclamation we have for International Firefighters' Day, which is today, May 4th. Whereas International Firefighters' Day is observed each year on May 4th to honor and remember past firefighters who have lost their lives while serving their communities to express gratitude to those that have served in this line of work and to show support and appreciation for those who presently serve. And whereas regardless of the language a firefighter speaks or the country in which he or she works and resides, all firefighters fight against the same enemy, fire. And whereas the personnel of the Westbrook Fire and Rescue Department follow a long line of tradition and honor while showing bravery and compassion in carrying out this critical public safety mission and risk injury and exposure to severe hazards when protecting our citizens and their property from harm's way. And furthermore, not hesitating to risk their own lives when called upon to save the lives of others. And whereas, at a moment's notice, firefighters are quick to respond to uncertain situations to mitigate danger and combat the threat of destructive fire in order to protect individuals, families, and the economic being of our community. And whereas the personnel of the Westbrook Fire and Rescue Department are vital members of our community with their commitment to continued training, skill enhancement, and numerous community outreach initiatives that work with the citizenry to achieve a safe environment in which to live, work, and play. And whereas, the acts of kindness and appreciation received from our citizens provide the needed encouragement and support of Westbrook Fire and Rescue personnel as they confront the dangerous and uncertain perils experienced in their everyday emergency duties. Now therefore, I, Mayor Michael T. Foley, Mayor of the City of Westbrook, Maine, do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2020, as International Firefighters' Day in the City of Westbrook and call upon the people of Westbrook to show gratitude to any fire rescue members that you come into contact with and to support the safety of activities in the City of Westbrook and Fire Rescue Department on this day and throughout the year. And I have set the seal of the City of Westbrook to be affixed to that proclamation that is included. Also, for International Firefighters' Day, today I did storytime with the mayor live from the Westbrook Public Safety Building in the Fire Bay and was able to visit with our firefighters on duty and thank them for their service. Also, we I sent an email out to the entire city about today's event and also the program that's being offered through the International Firefighters Association for putting a red light on your residents if you're able to, to show your support this evening for firefighters. And then also, we have a mayoral proclamation for May 20th, which is Building Safety Month. And I will just include that one into the record since it's fairly lengthy in reference to building safety codes that we feel are here important in the City of Westbrook. And then lastly, I have another important one that I'll read, a mayoral proclamation regarding Municipal Clerks Week, which is May 3rd through the 9th. And whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk provides a professional link between the citizens and local government bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Michael T. Foley, Mayor of the City of Westbrook, do recognize the week of May 3rd through May 9th as Municipal Clerks Week and further extended appreciation to our city clerk, our city clerk's office staff, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and the exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. And I have caused the seal of the City of Westbrook on this proclamation, and just want to publicly thank Angela and her staff for the work that they do as municipal clerks. One of the things I've taken pride in during the state of emergency is we've been able to maintain most of the clerk's functions and continuing to serve citizens with the various licenses and vital records requests that happen on a normal basis, but we've been able to do it in an appropriate manner. And then recently, when the state allowed notary services to take place, Angela was able to bring that forth very quickly with her and her staff to be able to offer those services. And then also, when we began emergency meetings via teleconference, she quickly was able to create some rules associated with that. So I thank her and her staff, Ashley Rand and Mel's last name escapes me and for their support and all the different things that we are doing. And then lastly, included in the packet is the City of Westbrook's Police Department Employee of the Quarter for January, March 20th. And that Sergeant Brian Olson, who was named the Employee of the Quarter, and the various items recognizing him are outlined. And Chief Roberts was able to present that to him. And we will hope to have, when we have an in-person meeting, welcome all those who have been recognized at an in-person meeting to have them quickly re-recognized in a public meeting. Also, as part of the state of emergency report, I'll just quickly note that I had indicated our hope is to resume in-person city council meetings on June 1st, when gatherings of 50 are allowed to happen. And so we hope that as things progress appropriately, we'll be able to have a June 1st in-person public meeting where we can take up our budget and other items that have been pending that we have set aside without in-person meetings. And then lastly, I know this Westbrook School Committee has is doing a lot of recognition for School Staff Appreciation Week. But check out their Facebook page and other items that they are doing to recognize their school staff as well as their recognition of the class of 2020, which they have many items that are are scheduled upcoming for that recognition. With that, Ms. President, I will turn it back over to you. If anyone has any questions about the state of emergency report or anything I mentioned today, I'd be happy to take those now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe any of our student representatives are on. Is that correct?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so it brings us to our first public comment, and I would refer to our city clerk. Did we get any written public comment?
We did not.
Okay, we will move on to, is there anyone that has any, any counsel, have any public comment? Seeing none. Brings us to unfinished business. Madam Clerk.
Under orders of the day, the first item is Order 2020-36. The title is authorizing award of settlement for 29 Maple Street, and in accordance with city council's rules for remote access meetings, I'll just read this into the record. That the Westbrook City Council hereby authorizes the award of settlement and the amount of $8,250 to Kimberly Blank of 29 Maple Street in accordance with the determination of appeal approved by Order 2020-27 adopted on March 2nd, 2020, entitled Adopting Findings Concerning Appeal of Insurance Claim Denial, subject to Ms. Blank's agreement to the release of all claims. And I'll note for the record that Ms. Blank did sign the release of claims.
I move Order 2020-36? Oh, we can't hear you.
I keep on, first I'm on, then I'm off. So would you like to take anymore? Or you just want to take that first one?
Um, well, 2020-36, 2020-37, 2020-38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, and 44.
Would anyone, is there a second to that?
Second. Mr. President.
Hold on.
Okay.
It's been moved by Vice President Turcot, seconded by Counselor Shaughnessy, for what is numbers 2020, 20, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, and 44. Would anyone like any of those separate? Seeing none? Any questions or comments?
Mr. President, sorry.
Yes.
Um, if we might have, just as we're required as part of the 1 M R S A subsection 403A for public meetings, that the legislation titles be read into the record. I know that we read the title, so I don't, I'm sure the clerk would be willing to do that for us if that works.
That's okay. I can do that. Sorry. I just quickly. Okay. 2020-36 authorizing award of settlement for 29 Maple Street. 2020-37 amending Order 2018-137 regarding acceptance and expenditure of additional assistance to firefighters grants funds. 2020-38 authorizing temporary construction and access easement agreement with Bath Savings Institution. Order 2020-39 authorizing acceptance of police department forfeiture funds. Order 2020-40 authorizing emergency expenditure for replacement fire alarm panel. Order 2020-41 authorizing purchase of radio equipment. Order 2020-42 authorizing acceptance and expenditure of stop violence against women formula grant. Order 2020-43 authorizing expenditures and amendments to the wastewater annual vendor list. And Order 2020-44 accepting donation from Warren Memorial Foundation and establishing the Westbrook Warren Memorial Foundation Emergency Art Grants Fund. Arts Grant Fund, sorry.
Thank you, Vice President Turcot.
Of course.
Is there any comments? By any counsel? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Reganjay?
I just noticed that he left the meeting.
Sure.
Oh, he's there.
Yes.
Counselor Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Counselor Morse?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Vice President Turcot?
Yes.
Counselor Story?
Yes.
President Riordan?
Yes, seven in favor and none opposed. Brings us to new business?
So under new business, we have one item that requires one reading. This is Resolve 2020-18 approving reapportment to the Long Creek Watershed Management District Board of Directors. That the Westbrook City Council hereby approves the reapportment of Eric Dudley, Director of Engineering and Public Services, to the Long Creek Watershed Management District Board of Directors as the City of Westbrook's municipal representative for a three-year term expiring July 2023.
What is the wish for the council? Counselor Shaughnessy?
I'll move Order 2020-45 authorizing funding and expenditure for community, whoops, Authorize 2020-18 approving appointment of the Long Creek Watershed Management District Board of Directors.
Right, that's a resolve too. Not an order, but that's alright. Is there a second to that?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Shaughnessy, seconded by Vice President Turcot for Resolve Number 2020-18. Do we have any discussions? I would, I would like to thank Eric for being on this on this board. I know Eric is very, very knowledgeable, and I think that he's an asset to this appointment. So thank you, Eric. If there's no other, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Reganjay?
Yes.
Counselor Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Counselor Morse?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Vice President Turcot?
Yes.
Counselor Story?
Yes.
President Riordan?
Yes. Seven in favor, none opposed.
The next item is Order 2020-45.
Someone's out of tune.
So Order 2020-45, this is authorizing funding and expenditure for community policing substation that the Westbrook City Council hereby authorizes an expenditure in the total amount of $4,500 to H R M Properties LLC for rent payments to the community policing substation located at 192 Brown Street, Apartment 1. For the months of April through June 2020, funds are available in the stated budget line.
What is the wish of the council?
I move Order 2020-45 authorizing funding and expenditure for community policing substation.
And is there a second? Counselor Shaughnessy? Any discussion on this item? Seeing none? Madam Clerk?
Counselor Reganjay?
Yes.
Counselor Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Counselor Morse?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Vice President Turcot?
Yes.
Counselor Story?
Yes.
President Meriden?
Yes, seven in favor, none opposed. Next item, please?
The next item is Order 2020-46 authorizing purchase of speed radar trailer that the Westbrook City Council hereby authorizes the purchase of a Decatur On-Site 300 MX Matrix Speed Radar Trailer from MS Martin Enterprise, Inc. of Amsterdam, New York at a total cost of $9,967 to assist the police department with traffic control initiatives. Funds are available in the stated budget line.
What is the wish of the council?
I move Order 2020-46 authorizing purchase of speed radar trailer.
Moved by Vice President Turcot. Is there a second?
Second?
Seconded by Counselor Reganjay.
Mr. President.
And any discussion on that?
Ms. President?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly let everyone know I've been working with the police department on their different traffic enforcement initiatives since taking over. Obviously, we've had a hiccup with the COVID-19 pandemic, and this is something that we thought was important to get on order so that we could have this delivered for as we return to normal traffic during the summer months, that we're able to deploy this trailer in areas of concern to help people get used to the appropriate speed limit in that area. And also, it's a good tool to help us gather data, so we will have information associated with the streets that concerns are raised, either to individual counselors or the city council as a whole. And we can provide that data on a regular basis and utilize this to help educate the public. So I hope the city council will support this this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, did we have one of these at one point?
So we have message board signs that public services has that are also used to have messages on. And those have technology in them to be able to calculate speed, but this one will be speed specific. I think some area communities like Falmouth and Wyndham have them, and it had like a speed limit sign at the top with an empty digit, so they can plug the what the correct speed limit is. And then it has like lights that go off when people are going too fast and indicating to them what their it's kind of like the one on Outer Congress Street, but it's portable versus being affixed.
Okay, I thought we may have used one on Forestry at one particular time, but may not have been ours or any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Council Story?
Or a concern. My concern is with bicycle traffic. I think these, I've seen these devices in bicycle lanes. You know, there are also cars parked in lanes, which, you know, is a normal occurrence, and the bicycle then will take the lane. But then when there's approaching traffic, I feel this will take the driver's eyes off of the bicycle and could cause some issues. So two concerns in the bike lane and distracting to drivers. So I don't feel that I would like to see these, especially in high traffic touristy summer months where there are lots of bicycles also.
Thank you. So the chief of police isn't on. Do we know where we actually place those?
She, she is on, and I will bring her into the meeting.
Okay.
Chief, you should be in if you want to share with us your thoughts. Chief?
Yes, good evening. Counselor, President Riordan, and Mr. Mayor. And so basically, hearing Counselor Story's concern, we can definitely work at setting up the trailer in areas where it's not blocking a bicycle lane. Can help with higher visibility in regards to possibly using traffic cones, other things to navigate traffic around, as well as the trailer is something that can be set up off the as well as the trailer is something that can be set up off the road. So if there is public land or we get approval from the private property owners to uh post the trailer, the dynamic of having a trailer versus a pole mounted is it's a lot more. Um, so I'm looking for, um, lot more mobile. And we've got traffic complaints pretty much on any road that is a commuter road and even some of the neighborhood roads that are shortcuts throughout the city. So trying to get the best um overall impact.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? It's been moved by Vice President Turcot, seconded by Counselor Reganjay for orders number twenty twenty forty six. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Reganjay?
Yes.
Counselor Shawnessy?
Yes.
Counselor Morse?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Vice President Turcot?
Yes.
Counselor Story?
No.
President Riordan?
Yes, six in favor, one opposed. Counselor Story. Next item, please.
The next item is order twenty twenty forty seven authorizing purchase of police utility uniforms that the Westbrook City Council hereby authorizes the purchase of police utility uniforms from Huntress Uniform of Manchester, New York at a total cost of five thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. Funds are available in the stated budget line.
Counselor Shawnessy?
I'll move order twenty twenty forty seven authorizing the purchase of police utility uniforms.
Is there a second, please?
I second.
Seconded by Vice President Turcot.
Mr. President?
Any discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, if I might, um, again, this was an item that I've been working with the police department on. Um, we've been trying to only bring forth items that we considered emergency, though this item is important to the police department because um it's a, it's a different type of uniform, a utility uniform that we are providing our officers as our officers have been doing a uh significant amount of road details for construction and will continue to be doing those. Um, specifically, we see them daily at the Rock Row site and there will be more and more as construction season picks up. And so this is a, the uniform that's more comfortable and appropriate for officers during, during those details and we thought that was appropriate uh for our officers to bring this forward and get this ordered in time for that construction season. Then the chief can speak more to it if anyone else has any questions.
Will, will those only be used for detail? Chef?
Chief, I unmuted you, go ahead.
Thank you, yes. Um, President Riordan, they're absolutely only be for the two reasons would be traffic details and when the main savings pavilion concert venue is operating again there. I am, I am both Captain Lally and I strongly believe that the professional style of uniform that we're currently work wearing will remain the uniform of day to day.
Okay, because I remember um when you first got here, um, some of the officers had a choice and um you actually got the professional ones and I think in these two instances, um, I think it, it would be okay in my book, so thank you. Any other discussion?
I do have a question.
Um, yeah.
If, if we are to go ahead and and approve this and purchase these uniforms, is there a, a a concern about receiving them um uh on time with the delays in in manufacturing and shipping and all that stuff for purchasing it right now, is there a concern?
I do not have information on if there's backup or not, Counselor Turcot. Um, Captain Larry, excuse me, Captain Flaherty is the, Chris did the research and worked with the company to get the actual quote. Um, ultimately, whatever time we're able to get the order in once the funding is approved. Um, I also want you and the public to know that the funding we're using is not tax based. We're using actually some of the funds that come in from those traffic jobs um that comes to the city separate from the officers overtime pay in order to fund this particular purchase and we've set in a process where we'll review the cost of the uniforms and determine if it is viable in the long run for the city.
Good to hear.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions? See a none. Um, it's been moved by Counselor Shawnessy, seconded by Vice President Turcot for orders number twenty twenty forty seven. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Reganjay?
Yes.
Counselor Shawnessy?
Yes.
Counselor Morse?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Vice President Turcot?
Yes.
Counselor Story?
Yes.
President Riordan?
Yes, seven in favor, none opposed. Next item, please.
The next item is order twenty twenty forty eight authorizing sale of Lot Two in Westbrook Heights Business Park that the Westbrook City Council hereby authorizes the mayor or his designee to enter into a contract for the sale of commercial real estate for the sale of Lot Two located within Westbrook Heights Business Park to Glass Solutions or its assigns for the total purchase price of one hundred forty thousand dollars as outlined in the attached exhibit and to take all actions necessary to complete such sale. Funds to be deposited into the stated revenue line.
What is the wish of the council? Counselor Shawnessy?
I'll move order twenty twenty forty eight authorizing sale of Lot Two in the Westbrook Heights Business Park.
I second.
And seconded by Vice President Turcot.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, I've invited uh our Economic Development Director Daniel Stevenson into the meeting so he can um present more detail and information on this item. But this is something that uh we've been working on for quite a while. Um, since I first started on the city council in two thousand and six, uh, the city had just uh entered into becoming a developer under uh for the Westbrook Heights Business Park and this is our second to last lot. Dan has been working very hard to close this project out and I'll turn it over to him to enlighten us on this um sale and what have outstanding and then Jerry can also provide more information uh if we need. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, we're very excited to get this lot sold, quite frankly, because it is the most difficult lot to develop um in um in the, in the park and that's specifically due to its size and developable area of just over two acres and there's ledge on slight in this, you know, there's quite a bit of slope and grade there. Um, so um, we have made Christopher's from Glass Solutions. Um, they're very excited to expand. Um, they'd be moving from Portland and expanding in Westbrook. Um, they like this site. Um, we've been working closely with them from the Economic Development Department to really get them to a point to be able to move their project forward as we all know, especially how things changed during uh COVID nineteen. Um, the, what's really even more exciting about the potential use as a eight thousand square foot, excuse me, six thousand square foot building of the site is that Glass Solutions, who will be the owner as well as the business inside um inside the building, um gets all of its supplies, or ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent of its supplies from directly across the street at Sidco. And one of the things about cluster building is whenever you have uses and you can get supply chain close by, it works well from an economic development model. So uh there will be another space out for lease as well, so you could have another use in there as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions for um Mr. Stevenson or any other um questions we got inside them? Don't see any. Um, so it's been moved by Counselor Shawnessy and seconded by Vice President Turcot for orders number twenty twenty forty eight. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Reganjay?
Yes.
Counselor Shawnessy?
Yes.
Counselor Morse?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Vice President Turcot?
Yes.
Counselor Story?
Yes.
President Riordan?
Yes, seven in favor, none opposed.
The next item is twenty twenty forty nine authorizing payment of deductible and settlement of litigation that the Westbrook City Council hereby authorizes payment of a two, twenty-five thousand dollar deductible pursuant to the terms of its insurance coverage and authorizes the settlement of Rosalind Janney versus City of Westbrook and Westbrook School Department for a total of one hundred thousand dollars with that amount to be shared by the cities and the school departments insurers and further authorizes any actions necessary to implement said settlement agreement. Funds are available in the stated budget line.
What is the wish of the council?
I move order twenty twenty dash forty-nine authorizing payment of deductible and settlement of litigation.
It's been moved by Counselor Reganjay, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Shawnessy?
Mr. President?
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. President?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take a moment to introduce this item and uh turn it over to uh Jerry to just briefly explain for the public's benefit. This item is, was outstanding um litigation item when I became mayor and uh Mr. Bryant has been working diligently to resolve this matter and uh this item is before us uh to be resolved this evening and I'll turn it over to uh Mr. Bryant to just briefly explain this item for the public's benefit. Jerry?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this is a claim from a former city employee um who at one point in time was simultaneously employed by both uh the City of Westbrook and the Westbrook School Department. Uh, the claim asserts that the City of Westbrook and the Westbrook School Department are one employer and therefore the two uh part-time positions this person held when combined should have um constantly a full-time position with a single employer and that uh because of that uh should have been accorded um both benefits, uh insurance and pension benefits as well as overtime in any week in which um work exceeded forty hours in a single week um even though um our assertion is that there city and the school department have been and remain two separate entities and two separate employers. Um, and uh this has been mediated at, at two different stages. Once before the claim was filed unsuccessfully. After the claim was filed, the court directed the parties back to mediation. Um, and this is the resolution that came out of it. The city, even though we do not feel that the claims are valid, um, we have taken uh measures to um take away the chance of any type of a claim like this recurring um through um no longer employing anybody uh in the municipality that also has employment with uh this uh school department uh and also moving forward with the school department to uh provide them with a separate employer ID number. Those were the two issues, uh even though we felt there was not a valid claim here. The two issues that certainly um gave rise to the claim are both uh being addressed at this time. So going forward, we should not see any exposure of this nature. Um, as indicated in the order, uh the lion's share of the settlement um is being covered by our uh both the city and the school department's insurance carriers.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Any other discussion? See a none. It's been moved by Counselor Reganjay and seconded by Counselor Shawnessy for orders numbers two thousand twenty twenty forty nine. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Reganjay?
Yes.
Counselor Shawnessy?
Yes.
Counselor Morse?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Vice President Turcot?
Yes.
Counselor Story?
Yes.
President Riordan?
Yes, seven in favor, none opposed. Next item?
The next item is order twenty twenty dash fifty authorizing Westbrook Environmental Improvement Corporation WIC expenditure for small business emergency commercial rental assistance program that the Westbrook City Council hereby authorizes a West Environmental Improvement Corporation expenditure in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand five hundred dollars for the establishment of a small business emergency commercial rental assistance program to support small businesses in Westbrook with rent payments during the COVID nineteen pandemic and further authorizes the city administration to administer such program funds as outlined in the attached exhibit. Funds are available in the stated budget line.
What is the wish of the council?
I move order twenty twenty fifty authorizing Westbrook Environmental Improvement Corporation WIC expenditure for small business emergency commercial rental assistance program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Reganjay.
Mr. President?
Discussions on this item?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you, um, thank you for the opportunity to uh entertain this item this evening. Um, myself and Economic Development Director Daniel Stevenson um and other economic development staff and city administrator Jerry Bryant and I have been working on this program um all last week, um early last week, which we then had a meeting with the Westbrook Environmental Improvement Corporation on Wednesday um in anticipation of bringing this to the city council this evening. I did send out with my mayor's message this evening an updated um uh guidelines for this program that uh had some changes following our legal council review. And so if you want to see those, we will make sure the final copy is included when this item is approved for second reading. We wanted to uh bring this program forward as we were working really hard to try to find a way here in the city of Westbrook to help businesses. Earlier this evening, we uh approved the, gave final approval to the uh arts um award grant program and we wanted to try to model something after that program. Um, some other area communities are doing loan programs and as it turns out, uh we don't necessarily have the funds available to capitalize such a program nor do we have the staff available to administer such a program. And based on a lot of the discussions that we have with businesses is that taking on additional loans and liabilities is a challenge for businesses during this difficult time. So we wanted to try to come up with a program uh using some uh funds that WIC had available to potentially um help uh potential sixty-seven businesses. Um, this program, uh, the one hundred thousand five hundred dollars equals the ability to, for us to help sixty-seven businesses. Should we um don't help sixty-seven businesses, the remaining funds will remain with WIC and should we have requests that exceed the program uh budget then we will consider either returning to WIC um or developing another program to potentially um help folks if other funding becomes available. But we thought that this program would be a win-win in a couple of different areas. One, because we would be able to help a business bridge any gap that they have for outstanding rent. And this is a business retention program which makes it eligible for TIF expenditures. And then at the same time, it would be helping a landlord, um, helping the landlord of the business um be able to continue to provide the services that landlords provide. So should there potentially be a business that is struggling to make ends meet, this will both help that business and the landlord of that business. And um, so that's the, the crux of the program. I will turn it over to our Economic Development Director Dan Stevenson to give us a little bit more detail and I hope um we're able to have the application and guidelines finalized in the morning once we get approval today so that we can begin accepting applications. And where we do have a second meeting scheduled this month, we can give final approval and therefore begin to release these funds to help these business owners during this difficult time. We have received a lot of positive feedback about the program and we are looking forward to this tool to be able to, to help businesses. Dan, do you have more to add?
Uh, just a little bit, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Um, it, one of the things that's so important that we're finding, especially with our small business community is that many of them are cash businesses and, you know, doing this, this way in the form of a grant puts cash in the pockets literally, you know, of, for the applicant which, but will be paid directly to, to the landlord. Um, but um also, um, it is, it can move quickly and that is so important right now that you're not applying um to, to a program um that could take um weeks or a month or what have you moving forward. We also believe um based off conversations we've had uh with businesses themselves as um well as in industry um others, others in industry that do that kind of development, that this is one of the most significant uh impact we could make with our small businesses is to support them uh with the relevant rental assistance in the form of a grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Any other discussions? Counselor Chow?
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, uh, thank you to the uh mayor and the WIC for um bring this forward. Um, and uh, as, as you know, Counselor Riordan and I are on the WIC team and uh we did, the WIC did authorize the mayor to um uh reason to deny the applications um in case the, uh, the mayor um felt like the application wasn't sufficient or um there's other priorities. Um, I do see some language in there that um gives the, the mayor permission to deny an application. I would like to um strengthen that language by adding amendment to this um, this guideline. And the amendment would read, this emergency commercial rental assistance program will be managed and overseen by the mayor's office, economic department, code enforcement and tax collecting department. This application can This application can be denied for any reason by the city, including, but not limited to, excessive nonpayments of property taxes, fees, dues, or fines." The reason why I would like this amendment added to the proposal is that my constituents would be very upset if they found that we gave up rental assistance to commercial landlords who did not pay their property taxes in a while. I understand that these are difficult times, but if if someone's been not paying us taxes way before these difficult times, I'm not sure I'd be happy giving them some sort of stimulus. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to add that I know that we've had a lot of discussions in the WIC meeting regarding this, but this is actually to cover, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Stevenson, is to cover the rent if these folks are renting from a an owner, that they're actually paying their rent. So the separate, two separate people here, the the people are paying their rent, and if we have some people that are delinquent, then we need to not penalize the business for not getting this these funds. So I'm not sure if I can support that amendment that because it's actually penalizing the person that really needs it the most, because they could either get evicted, or I think that we should go the route to go after the taxes rather than the people's rent. So that's.
Mr. President?
My opinion on that.
Mr. President.
Is that, Mr. Stevenson, can you comment on that?
Yeah, the purpose of the program.
Yes.
For the applicant. The applicant is the small business owner. The difference is is we're not going to send a check to the applicant to then send it to the landlord. We're going to send it directly to the landlord, and one of the items that needs to be upheld.
On their behalf.
Is assigned is assigned lease, excuse me, on behalf, is assigned lease. There is one other exception. If there is a business, a entity that actually owns the building, they would qualify as well, but we would end up paying the mortgage holder in that particular case, or some flexible way to work that out. But you're correct. It's to help the applicant, which is.
Correct. Any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I might add, we also discussed this at length with with WIC, and Council Chow didn't provide us that proposal then, so or or between now and then. So it's a bit disappointing that we weren't able to potentially work something in for that. But we, again, to your point, we don't want to penalize people. There's a lot of people who need assistance. And one of Council Chow's proposals that that we weren't, the WIC board wasn't a hundred percent in agreement of, which was included in this, was to to exclude people who've received the Paycheck Protection Program. We are not in favor of that as the administration, though we worked that language in as amended and as requested for Council Chow, because these businesses are in need, and so businesses that took on a loan, and these loans are significant. They're not small loans. Businesses that took on these loans still need this form of assistance. And so we're able to prioritize those who haven't received the loan, and we will then award those who have received the loan these funds, but it is difficult to to propose an amendment like Council Chow has suggested. A lot of these businesses are in need, and this is a small amount of money to be able to just help bridge a gap. I've talked to many business owners in the community, and most of them, their rent is more than $3,000, and this isn't going to cover a hundred percent, and it's up to them to describe to us and describe to our economic development staff the need for these funds. And I am not going to be participating in the approval of these. It's our economic development staff and team that is going to be doing that, so that way they can they can be able to administer that program on our behalf. And so I think that a proposal like Council Chow's would be an administrative burden, and we wouldn't be able to help a lot of folks in this business, and our our intent is to help folks right away, get money into their hands to help them pay their bills. I even know businesses who've received the Paycheck Protection Program, who are still struggling to be able to meet the needs of that program, bring their employees back, and pay all their bills, and trying to plan that out. And so we feel like that this may help people bridge that gap, and we hope the council will support the proposal as it is this evening.
Right. So procedurally, is there a second to Council Chow's amendment? Seeing none, that amendment dies. Getting back to the original amendment, is there any other more question?
I have a question, President.
Yes, Council Story.
This will be funded through a TIF. Is that correct? Could someone just explain that briefly?
Mr. Stevenson?
Sure. Yes, it's funded through through WIC, and WIC is funded through five different TIFs that have been around for quite some time. So yes, it's tax sheltered a dollar that it's funded by.
Okay.
Council Story?
Yeah, I would like to add that this is a unique and difficult time, and I would be in favor of this with a pledge that we try to exceed the plan that's been laid out to return businesses to full operation and to go a step further and try to attract tourists. I see a lot of talk about closing the borders during this time, and obviously, we need people patronizing our businesses so that they don't need this type of assistance. So that's all I'd say.
Council President?
Yes, Council Reganjay?
Yeah, I think I'm not sure if people were able to see some news around this weekend ranking Maine as number one for economic vulnerability to Corona. And some of those reasons mentioned were because Maine is the most vulnerable to economic fallout from Corona due to its older population, abundance of small businesses, and reliance on retail and tourism. So I think anything that the Council of Westbrook can do to support small businesses, it's really very helpful, because the PPP, I know it's not sufficient to really bring back businesses to a level where they were. So I really support that. Anything that we can be able to offer, regardless of what people are able to, whether they were behind or not, I think we should not really penalize anybody based on a past, but we should actually work with them to have them consolidate or reopen their businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Reganjay. I just want to disclose that I actually voted to have the Paycheck Protection Program folks be, lack of a better term, second in line. I felt the need that those folks that weren't getting any money, any help whatsoever, should have a priority, and it's not that we're not going to. Some of these businesses did get the PPP. They would probably end up with this money also, but I think in fairness, you know, some people's gotten a little bit of help, and I think that I believe that we should be able to help as many businesses that apply. I would encourage folks to apply. I'm very blessed not to be a small business. I work for a large business, but there's so many things that they have to be on top of and fill out, and yet, they're still trying to stay afloat. So my hats go off to the local businesses. I personally do not put any of my receipts in, because I'd be ashamed of how much money I spend each week at these places. But it is the backbone of our city, and I'm very, very proud of them. And I think that any organization or any money that is available for these folks, I want them to be around. I want them to be successful, so.
I have a question.
Let's go to Vice President Turcot first, and then Council Reganjay.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I do want to also mention that PPP is not free money. I mean, it is a loan, and you have to wait for that forgiveness phase to to get to get that of, you know, portion of that amount forgiven by the federal government. So and then on top of that, if you're talking about, you know, businesses and that are struggling to penalize them for something that's happened before, I, you know, that's really not who we are, and this is an unprecedented time. So I would I would say that I agree with most everything that was said in that vein, and I would be supporting this.
Thank you. Council Reganjay?
Yeah, so it's very difficult when we start going into the details of the PPP, whatever the three Ps are, because as Vice President just said, we we don't know who's going to get what, but the most businesses that actually are in business that have employee in place are the most who are going to benefit from this funding when it comes to forgiveness. And the most vulnerable people are these small businesses that either closed, laypeople off, they won't even get these funds forgiven, because the expenditure is limited to what they can do. So I'm not sure if you're going to rely on people who receive the PPP as a second in line, that some who are really struggling, even though they may have received the PPP, they still struggle. So I'm not sure how you're going to prioritize to make them second in line, knowing that some of them still will use this as a loan instead of just a grant.
Council Story?
Yeah, I just feel the need to repeat that our businesses need earned income as we squabble over what to do with government funding. So I just urge everyone to get back to patronizing these businesses with their earned income. I wish them all the best.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Been moved by Vice President Turcot, seconded by Council Reganjay for orders number 2020-50 as presented. Madam Clark?
Council Reganjay?
Yes.
Council Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Council Morse?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Vice President Turcot?
Yes.
Council Story?
Yes.
President Reardon?
Yes. Seven in favor, none opposed. I believe that is the.
That's all.
That's all for the agenda, and a meeting to adjourn would be in order?
Wait, public comment? No?
Madam Clark, do we have any?
I don't have any other public comment. I'll I would ask the mayor if he's received any during this.
We haven't received any via the Zoom Q and A or Facebook Live at this time, so there is no other public comment. And I'll just quickly remind everyone, we will be planning a special meeting on May 18th for the presentation of the fiscal year 2021 budget.
All right.
President Gary?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm yeah, I'm not sure how, since this is a public meeting, how the the resident of Westbrook are utilizing the the main state housing funding for rental assistance. I'm not sure, because I'm a non-profit organization, and I see that we have been assisting people with that request, and I'm not sure if this information is on our Westbrook website. Any link to the assistance that is at $500 being donated or given to assist people with the rental assistance? So I was wondering if people are taking advantage of this program given by the governor in Maine.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I might, we've shared that program on our social media, and it's available on our website for folks to get that information.
That's great. That's great.
Motion to adjourn would be in order?
I say move.
Moved by Vice President Turcot, seconded by
I would say.
Council Shaughnessy. And Madam Clark, one more time.
I'm sorry, I missed. You seconded that?
Shaughnessy.
Council Shaughnessy.
Council Shaughnessy. Yep. Council Reganjay?
Yes.
Council Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Council Morse?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Vice President Turcot?
Yes.
Council Story?
Yes.
President Reardon?
Yes, and we are adjourned. Please be have a safe week and enjoy sunshine. Thank you.
Nice to see your faces. Bye-bye.
Good to see you all.